What was it? Do you have the record for the shores?
He's close.
I think now.
It's a very good.
I don't know what the result was. I've got a splendid.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know what the result was. I've got a splendid.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Hey, Jane?
He did something big. He cried.
All right. Set out a little statement.
All right. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with the open session invocation by Ricky Dodson, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Melissa Savage.
Let me pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this great day. Father, we thank you for life, life abounding you give us every day, Father. Father, we say that everything we do tonight will be pleasing first and foremost to you, Father. And we ask to be for the betterment of our children and our staff and our county school system, Father. Lord, let us ask you to bless everyone that's here tonight. Lord, let you give us home safety tonight, Father. You say you forgive us when we fail you, for it is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to the approval of the 25 July 29, 2025 meeting. Motion.
Don't move.
Motion by Mitch Stonecifer, seconded by Ben Danner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any additions or deletions to the proposed meeting agenda?
I've got the item number 13 on the consent agenda, the quarter reports.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by James, seconded by Shirley. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of the September 9, 2025 meeting agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion by James, seconded by Ricky. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll read over the consent agenda items and we will get all of those. Well, first we're going to have Kim. She's going to introduce two students that are here tonight.
We want to welcome our two new students. They're going to join us as student board members. And they are from Liddison Academy. We have Reagan Shod, who is the Vice President of the Student Government, and Brooklyn Loftus, the President of the Student Government from Liddison. We welcome you girls. We're so glad you're here.
All right. We'll move to the consent agenda items. Number one, fiscal year 26, 142 IDEA partnership for some somatic change, K-12 original budget. Fiscal year 26, 142 CTE Perkins, basic revision number 1A and revision 1B. Fiscal year 26, 142 Title IX McKinney Vento original budget. Fiscal year 26, 142 Twenty First Century CCLC remaining funds original budget. Fiscal year 25, 142 Early Literacy Pre-K Teacher Stop and Original Budget. Fiscal year 26, 142 Consolidated Admin Revision Number Two. Fiscal year 26, 142 Title 1A Revision Number Two. Fiscal year 26, 142 Title 2A Revision Number Two. Fiscal year 26, 142 Title 4 Revision Number Two. Fiscal year 26, 142 IDEA Part B Revision Number Two. Fiscal year 26, 142 IDEA Preschool Revision Number Two. Fiscal year 26, 142 HQIM Literacy Implementation Networks Original Budget. And number 13, the quarterly fiscal. Which fiscal year is that? Twenty five? Twenty five. Fiscal year 25 quarterly reports. Got a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Ben, seconded by James. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move into new business items. Number one, consider approval of the 2025-2026 Board Chairman.
I nominate Mr. Stonecifer.
Have a nomination and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mitch, looks like you are the new chairman. Consider approval of the 2025-2026 Vice Chairman.
I nominate Ricky Dodson.
I'll second that.
I'm good. Mitch, don't miss none.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider approval of the 2025-2026 TM Legislative Network Representative.
I think being T. Dan.
That's what I said. Say I nominate Ben. I second.
We always like a volunteer before we know it.
I'm told, yeah, okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It looks like you're going to be our legislation.
All right.
No complaint.
Number four, consider approval of the 2025-2026 Overton County Certified Supplement Pay Scale. Motion by James, seconded by Ben. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call.
William Abston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Ten-four-zero, post-motion passes.
Move to number five. Consider approval for the low bid of Allen's Elementary School addition for $3,523,500 from Midstate Construction. Total project, $3,809. Eight, eight-hundred-nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Motion by Mike Hayes. Seconded by Melissa Savage. Any discussion? All right. We'll have a roll call vote on that.
William Abston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Ten-four-zero, post-motion passes.
Number seven, consider approval of the low bid for Rickman Elementary School addition of $8,764,000 from King Construction Group. A total project of $10,115,000.
Make that motion.
Motion by Rick Dodson, seconded by Mitch Stonecifer. We'll do a roll call vote on that one.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
William Abston?
Yes.
Ten-four-zero, post-motion passes.
Number eight, consider approval to move $6,43,665 from fund balance reserve for balance of building program in excess of bond and to replace LA softball fencing, repair A.H. Roberts Basketball Court and fencing, and install Wilson Pre-K awning.
Make a motion.
Motion by Ben Danner, seconded by James Klaus. Any discussion? Do a roll call vote on that one.
William Abston?
Yes.
Ashley Carr?
Yes.
James Klaus?
Yes.
Ben Danner?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Shirley Myers?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Melissa Savage?
Yes.
Mitch Stonecifer?
Yes.
Ten-four-zero, post-motion passes.
Consider approval of the fiscal year 26, 141 General Purpose Schools Revision Number Two, Safety Pilot Revision Number Three, ISM, and Revision Number Four Building Program. Have a motion? Motion by Rick Dodson, seconded by Ben Danner. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider approval of the fiscal year 26, 171 Education Capital Projects Revision Number One, the building program. Motion by James Klaus?
I second.
Seconded by Shirley Myers. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move to OCEA recognition. Jen Prager?
Good evening. Happy fall. We'll have it for a few days and then we'll have summer again. And then we'll probably move straight into winter. I think things are going pretty smooth out in the schools. A few hiccups, a few speed bumps we've had. I think the biggest concern anybody has has to do with the after-school program and getting it staffed. We have lots of kids. We don't have as many teachers interested in doing it. And it may be because there hasn't been a salary increase in after-school in several years. And at that time, it only went at $5. So just something to think about for the future, hopefully increasing that so we can attract more teachers that want to take on the number.
Does that money not come from the state generally?
Well, this year it, up until this year, it came from a grant. And, and it didn't.
I know, but if it was to be increased in the future, would not the state have to send more money?
That I'm not sure because I don't know how the funding is divided up. I know that when it was increased a few years ago, I don't think more money came. I think it's just allocated differently. And, and I'm not familiar with how that's done. But just something to think about because that's something, it's become a difficult to staff area, I think. Other than that, things are great. Thanks, guys.
All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Ben Danner, seconded by Ricky Dodson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's fine with everybody. We'll move right into the work session. On the work session, it is discuss maintenance position at Rickman Elementary.
Yeah, it's been brought to my attention, Rickman School has really grown. It's up to 717 as last Friday when I talked to Ms. Poston. And it's pretty well leaving full-time maintenance down there to work every day is maintenance. And right now, our man is split, he's hired custodian and hired maintenance. And I'd like to see if we could make him full-time maintenance and try to hire him maybe a four-hour custodian till the rest of the day. I know the high school's the biggest school in the county, and I think somebody is doing maintenance there all day long, my right crystal.
So I'm not sure how the duties. I think he is there doing maintenance all day. I'm just not sure that it's necessarily split that way as far as here. But I know that I think his duties are maintenance all day. That's what I was told.
Okay. So we have a full-time maintenance man staff specifically at that school? Or is it countywide? Or is it there?
That's just what his duties are. So like, he may be hired as a same as every other maintenance slash custodian. But when they do the duties, as far as what they want him to do at LA, he does strictly maintenance.
Okay. So how are the custodians and the maintenance broken up at the schools?
Same. They're all the same. They're maintenance. So their maintenance custodian at every school.
And the custodians are based on the square footage?
Yes. And I have more copies if you guys want.
I just know our school continues to grow down there and it's, it's lots of maintenance work to do every day.
It had been mentioned to me. I brought this up several times. I know like in the updates that it was a need. I talked to Ms. Poston as well, as well as Steve Mowgli. And that was one of the main areas. Rickman School was in need at a full-time maintenance. Just because of all the issues they continue to have.
Now with the amount of square footage that we have, can we do like we're doing at the high school, the maintenance slash custodian be full maintenance and then the four custodians cover everything?
Well, we got to think about two. When, excuse me, Allentown Hillham with the additions.
That will increase the square footage.
That's what I mean, the square footage. So you may want to look at.
And when the square footage increases, it can be like with the high school when we increase to the custodians at five. Once that square footage increases. And then still have the one person that's doing, if the maintenance custodian.
I had mentioned that as well, but I think the part, the half that their maintenance person does would be a lot to put on the other four.
The custodian, the four-hour custodian.
Yeah, it's the other four. Yes, the other four custodians. I think it would, I think, according to Ms. Poston, it was going to put too much on the others to pick out. She didn't feel like it would be something that was doable, but.
Mike, on the square footage that we're adding at Rickman with those, how much square footage are we adding?
Twelve classrooms.
More than twelve?
Well, we got the fourteen plus the playroom.
Plus the hallways, they say hallways too.
Yeah, the hallways.
And plus, there's health and lunchroom.
And building for the cafeteria. So you're looking at probably. Probably another one.
The classrooms, eight hundred square feet, correct?
Because right now, we're 50,000 square foot smaller than.
So eight hundred ten, that's.
Eight times.
That's eight thousand. Yeah, you're going to add probably 10,000 to 12,000 square feet.
Add more than. Because fourteen classrooms to eight hundred is eleven-two. And then your playroom, then plus your lunchroom. You're at thirteen or fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
So even if we added 14,000 to it, it's only going to put us at, right at 90,000, which the high school still has.
Yes.
Almost 30,000 more.
And they've got what, almost six custodians? Five point six-nine?
Because it looks like according to this that you get.
Hillham's ten classrooms, that's eight thousand square feet. So there we can add thousands.
How big was the playroom? That's what I was trying to remember exactly what it was.
Probably two and a half.
What'd you say?
At Raven.
Raven was twenty thousand.
The playroom was?
Well, the whole, the whole addition was twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand square feet.
Ten and eleven.
So if it was 2,000, it's going to put us at 93. If the whole addition was 20,000, it's going to put us at 93,000.
I'd almost say if we're going to move the maintenance to full-time, go ahead and hire a half a person now, then move it to full-time because it's going to be a year and a half probably before that one's done in Rickman. So go ahead and hire a half now to compensate for that maintenance. But we need to look at Allen's and Hillham as well.
Well, yeah, because if you look at the square footage, based on square footage and personnel, Rickman's got higher than even the high school. Point zero zero five zero is the, is the middle school. The high school is point zero zero four four, and Rickman is point zero zero five five. Based on the square footage. I'm, I gotta take, go ahead and add another half, I believe.
I think the next thing.
Then we could probably make it full-time a year from now or when that new addition opens. Then we need to look at Hillham and Allen's, at least a half person in those.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is their enrollments really that high?
Allen's could probably use that full time.
Can we get the numbers on, and add that and kind of project what the square footage is going to be? And just, and then, so we can see where there's a deficiency. I think, I mean, I'm thinking Rickman needs the help of this, but also Hillham. With the addition, then we have the two custodians. They're also going to need, they may need a half now as well. Of course, those won't be completed until.
Four hundred days.
Yeah, a year from now, so.
How long have we had these exact numbers at the school? No, we added a half at Allen's.
We added a half at Allen's just last year, maybe.
I know Rick's been the same for, Rick's been the same for 20 years.
It was going to have people in the house that goes into claims like we used to have.
LMS used to have four. But now they have thirty-seven. They may have lost one.
They can be at the three or four and then they. But not all of them. We have like.
I think if we can get the numbers.
My teacher will.
Square footage.
I think it's all.
Yeah.
Because the more kids you got, the more maintenance you got too.
And, and more.
More stuff.
Yeah, because we need to look at, if it's going to be on a square footage basis, what square footage do we need to have a full-time maintenance person? When we're looking at this to see, because is there a certain square footage and we go above that? We're going to need a dedicated full-time maintenance person? Or how we want to divide that up too? So that as we go into the future, when we're, if we have to do any other projects or anything, we can see and be prepared for what we need.
For some of them too, some of the schools are older than other ones and they need more maintenance. Say H, I guess their newest school, with all of them, I guess.
Is it the high school or is it H?
A.H.
A.H.'s most.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you would think maybe Rickman or something more because that part of that business is probably older than some of the other buildings we've got.
Maybe need to make a list that by the time the addition, additions are born, we might need a full-time maintenance in most of the schools. That would need to go in the budget equals bond. Plus custodians.
All right. So we'll get some more information on that and then go from there on. The person, because we also have to take into consideration that we've got a very tight budget this year and we need to keep that in mind as we go and start trying to add people to that. And because at the very end of the year, it may be very, very tight for us. All right. Does anybody else have anything else for the work session?
I've got two or three more. First of all, I guess just thinking about this. Mike Hayes has done a lot of work on the building committee of being the chairman. He's had, he's come to a lot of extra meetings. He's done a lot of phone calls. He spent a lot of extra time. I know, William, you've done a lot. And I'd like to see Mike be compensated a little for what he's done and what he's going to have to do from here on to this is done. He's put a lot of time, a lot of effort. And I just, I think he should be compensated for it. That's just my opinion.
I agree.
I don't know what the figure is or what it is. I don't either. Crystal probably can tell us.
I can't get with the county commission and see, that is something that has to go through the county commission. Any board member pay, it has to go through the county commission. But I can see if they have somebody that's like a chair of a committee and see what they kind of get.
I'd like her to check in on that.
Because there's a difference because they get paid per committee. You know what I mean? Like if we paid for the committee, he would be getting paid every time he.
He has spent a lot of time on that.
I know. I'm not asking for nothing.
I know you're not asking. I just make the right thing to do.
So we'll check on that and.
Couple times today and it was a weird busy signal. I was going, I did try to call and get with them on some numbers.
We'll do that and see when we get the numbers and everything on that, we'll revisit that.
I have to, the school board can't make up that thing. We raised that for someone. What was that like, maybe two years ago? We raised the board member, but we have to be very careful because like board members can't get more than the county.
I mean, the county commission committees pay about more than the school board does to start with on top of when they get their monthly meeting. So their committee meetings pay as much as we get a month. On top of they get so many more hundred dollars for the regular meeting. So it's not comparable.
What, what did they pay for committee meetings there?
It, it was forty dollars out of there. I think it's a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty per committee they go to now. On top of the two fifty a month they get, you know, two, so.
I think their monthly is three hundred dollars. I think their monthly is three hundred.
But if you have ten committee meetings, it's.
And then the committee meetings are added on.
Yeah.
And everybody's assigned to a committee on the commissioners. And I guess they meet about once a month, don't they?
Some of them committees meet ten or fifteen times a month.
Well, and a while back, we went through.
Ten or fifteen times? I don't think we need to move it.
No, I understand it's, it's not comparable, some of their.
Yeah, because a while back, we went through as a board and dissolved every committee that was on there. The only committee that sort of hung around was the committee that Mike's on because we were doing building projects on. Every other committee went away because it was getting too much.
Well, don't we have, don't, do you already have it set up like a pay for committees?
Yeah, we have. We pay if we have any committee.
Work sessions.
If we have a work session for the building.
But why wouldn't he, he just get paid that for doing that? Where would that be? You know, I mean, that would, because he's doing a work session for doing the building.
I can check into it. Right now, it has just said that if we have a committee meeting, a called committee meeting, it is paid per committee meeting.
Yeah.
That's Ben and T. is Ben.
Well, I got two more. One more was our 2024 and 25 Support Personnel Pay Scale. That year, we give some of the employees, we actually give a hundred twenty-nine got a two-dollar increase and eighty-five only got a dollar increase. And that's been brought to my attention quite a few times and.
Say that again.
In 2425's budget year, the Support Personnel Pay Scale, like the secretaries, the custodians, the maintenance, all that, they got, part of them got a two-dollar increase that year and the rest of them got a dollar increase.
And that was why?
That's just.
Was that based on their years?
No.
That'd be a crystal question.
No, it was because of the subrates were set at something that was higher than our employees. And so we had some employees that were leaving to go be subs. And so then they raised the minimum pay to where it would be higher than the subs, but only the minimum pay, almost kind of like we did to the teacher scale, which kind of skews the scale slightly. So that put only the ones that was making below a certain number at the time, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, I think the ones that started out at 12 an hour went to 14.
Yeah.
And everybody else that was already higher than 12, they got a dollar.
They did.
Because that's right, the subpay was more and people was saying, I'm just going to go be a sub, make more money. Because that's right, the subpay was more, and people was saying, I'm just gonna go be a sub, make more money.
A hundred and twenty-nine people got the twelve-dollar increase, and eighty-five just, got the two dollar, eighty-five got a dollar increase. So if we did go back and try to refix it, it would cost a hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. But, that's awesome.
Did we give a raise?
Well, we did give a raise, so everybody got some, everybody got something on this when it got increased there too. This is like before, when we went and we fixed this pay scale and went to this, we had some of the people, we had about ten people that didn't get a raise at all, because they were already above the pay scale. So when we were telling everybody they were getting a five cent raise, those people were already above the pay scale, so they didn't get a raise that year on there. There's several, I think it was ten people, that when we first went over to this pay scale, they didn't get a raise, because they were on a separate pay scale that was already paying more than this pay scale was. Because when we developed this one, there was four or five pay scales out there that all had different amounts for different people that were created over the years. So we combined those all into one to sort of even it out like we did with the teachers, and re-divided the year, how much they got paid.
One other thing, I'll be quiet. I have had quite a few calls about, and the subpay on the non-certified, which they dropped from a hundred and twelve fifty down to ninety-five. And the certified got a raise from a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and forty-five fifty, am I correct? I have had quite a few calls about that thing.
Well, and the reason that we did that, if you can remember, is because everybody was saying, you're putting them above what our people make, you're putting it above what our people make, you put it above what our people make. So, we went back and adjusted that so that it was right, even with what our people make.
And I think based on what Ms. Dylan had sent out, I mean, that ninety-five for non-certified, it was pretty in line, or higher than what a lot of the other ones.
Yeah.
Had paid.
Yeah, we were hiring most of the districts.
And we definitely need the certified subs, because you have to have them after so many days, so in order to feel relieved, so.
And the certified sub, on the information that she got us, I believe the certified sub, we were right in line with everybody on what they were paying with the certified. The only one that was higher than the certified then, we were, was Putnam County.
Correct.
That's all we got?
Sure.
That's it. That's all my time to address it.
Could we get an update on the buses, where the hoods, the discoloration on the hoods, getting those repainted?
Yeah, they actually ordered the paint and have started that, I'm not sure where they are, but they did order the paint. The ISM budget had to be approved for this year, where they closed out one year, and then they had to go back in and reallocate all the funds that were left over. So they did get the ISM grant approved, and it was in one of these budget amendments tonight that we'll send to the county commission, but they have ordered the paint since everything was approved, they got to go ahead and order the paint, and I'm sure they probably started hopefully, because they've been waiting on the paint. And to get the budget.
And then the board retreat is scheduled for September thirtieth, correct? Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
I got these off bronze.
All right, do we have anything else? We'll bring the work session to an end.